Seven. Seven oh three, I'm gonna open up the public hearing on the twenty twenty four budget. We need to make a motion to open up in the open or do you? So we need a motion and a second to open up the public hearing.
I move to open up the public hearing at seven oh four.
Second. Hearing is open. Is anybody here wanting to speak at the public hearing on the twenty twenty four budget?
Does that include the capital improvement plan from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight?
It includes the twenty twenty four capital budget, yeah.
Okay, so then, yes.
Okay.
Want to come up there or should I just stand back here?
Uh, you might come up here so the right to pick you up for the two uh members we have on Zoom.
Okay, no, I'm fine, I'll just stand. So I'll be brief because you all know why I'm here, right? I'm here on behalf of New Glarus Cares Community Foundation to seek support from the village board for funding the eighty thousand dollars in the twenty twenty four capital improvement plan um for new park equipment at Candy Cane Park. As I've shared previously, the current park equipment is in significant disrepair and is in need of replacement. The village itself acknowledged that fact in their twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, or twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen comprehensive outdoor recreation plan um where Candy Cane Park was listed as a short-term, high-priority investment. Um yet to date, no funding has actually been provided uh to uh or has been allocated uh to the new park equipment at Candy Cane Park. New Glarus Cares has secured an eighty thousand dollar grant from an anonymous foundation, but that grant comes with two conditions or contingencies. The first of which is that the village provide matching funds of eighty thousand dollars. And the second is that the playground um be built inclusive so that children of all ages and abilities can come together and play. While we realize that the village will need to follow their formal bid process for this project, New Glarus Cares has already done a considerable amount of exploratory work and research. We've gotten preliminary designs and bids from multiple vendors. We've held two listening sessions for parents in the community, one specifically for parents who have children with special needs. Um and the second uh was a meeting that I held in my home last week for people who live in the Candy Cane uh immediate neighborhood. Based on that research, we believe the total cost of the project will be in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. And the New Glarus Cares group is willing to fundraise for the remaining forty thousand dollars that we're approximating um would be the budget gap. That's of course assuming that the village approves their eighty thousand dollar contribution in order to access the eighty thousand dollars in grant money. This is a unique opportunity for the village uh to leverage private funding to cover sixty percent of the expected cost of the that park equipment and achieve something that most small towns of our size could not afford on their own uh in inclusive park. We've already received great feedback and support from the community for this project, including verbal commitments from several individuals and several businesses in the community who are willing to back this effort. Um that said, we have not began any formal fundraising for the park equipment because we don't intend to move forward with that until we know if the village is going to um contribute to the matching funds to get access to the grant dollars. That's it, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to your writing that they were keeping secret. Okay, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I want to say with the I.
Alright.
I. Close motion period. So okay, now we call the New Glarus Village Board meeting to order. Keep silence all cell phones during the meeting. I look for the approval of the agenda. Go on.
Sir.
Favor say aye. Alright, I. Close motion period. Item B, here's some shit about topics. On item top list on this agenda, items will not be debated or acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee of action as required. See no votes. Yeah, sir.
I have a public comment.
You're not.
Under number three.
But to a board member.
About this. I I would just like to report that the uh corner of Eleventh Avenue and Second Street is Halloween Central. And um we were privileged again this year to have our Chief of Police Jeff Durnan do a really nice job promoting the uh uh the village and the fire department, I mean and the police department. Um he has a new car with all kinds of flashing lights which attracts kids for miles around. And then he hands out green rings so that they're safe. And um I'm uh on one of those corners. And I can report that virtually a hundred percent of the kids either said thank you or their parents, parents said, say thank you. And then lastly, uh just as uh I can't resist being entertaining. So I had my bowl of stuff there. And I told, as the kids came in, I said, you can take two unless you're nice, and then you can take three. And one young man, literally when I said that, his shoulders went down and he said, I'll try to be nice. So it was worth the whole night just to see this kid respond. Anyway, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Off.
Uh, item four, approval of the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion second. Discussion. If you know, favor say aye.
Aye.
Item five, new business. Um. I don't know, do I go through all these? I think we historically, last few years have kind of approved like A two H, right? That's what we're looking at. I move on.
Prove A through H.
Separate motions or?
Well, if we go A through H, we can just do it as a block.
Okay, good.
And that's.
No, good.
Make that motion.
Yep. Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Are you still out there yet, Maggie?
I'm out there, can you, yeah, I said yes.
Okay.
We didn't hear you.
Yeah. Okay, item I, consider a discussion. Regional Planning Commission proposal for tax increment district plan. And Lauren, can you introduce this young lady?
We have Misty here from the Southwest Regional Planning Commission. Set her up over here. I wanna give a quick introduction. Um, so I've been having discussions with um this group about how we're doing a tax increment district plan. Um, this is to hopefully jumpstart some more housing development in our community. Um specifically, I'd like to target Valpelle Phase Two. We've had discussions in the past about a potential developer in this area, but there are some costs that have made it difficult to get infrastructure up there. And so as I've talked with colleagues, as I've talked with Southwest Regional Planning Commission, it seems like tax increment financing is a great way to help incentivize some of that development to get a developer over that kind of financial hump. Um and so I I'd love to have a Southwest kind of prepare plan for us so that we can game plan exactly how we take advantage of TID for a development like this. Uh but Misty's gonna give kind of an overview of how TID works and then kind of what the plan would be and what that process would kind of look like, so.
Sure.
No, actually, if you don't mind, I'll say it. Um, but I can say if you want. Thank you. So my name is Misty Mosoff, I work with um Southwestern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, I'm the Assistant Director there. Our Executive Director is Troy Maggie. Not sure if you've seen Troy or heard of Troy, but we're actually your regional partner. So I'll go in a little bit about me and a little bit about um regional planning. So my background is in, yeah, go ahead.
She's got a handle.
Okay, no, that's fine.
So my background is actually in municipal government, I've got a little over twenty years' experience in municipal government. I started out as a as a clerk treasurer and then I was a utility clerk and a city administrator. And now I am working with regional planning so that I can help multiple governments in a five-county region. Um, so a lot of these positions afforded me money things, some of which is um planning and zoning. Um and so that's kind of why we're here tonight is to plans relate to planning and zoning and economic development. I'm very passionate about helping communities and especially communities like yours. I was really impressed with the conversation at finance committees because you don't always hear that much conversation. So that was impressive to me.
Multiple ways to annoy.
It was impressive to me that you're committed and engaged in your community. That's nice to see. Um, our organization um is governed and created under state statutes, we've been around since nineteen seventies, so about fifty-three years. Um and as a branch of local government, um our governing board is made up of three members from each of our commu- each of our counties. So we cover Grant, Green, Iowa, Richland, and Lafayette Counties. Um on our board from Green County is Jerry Booth, Jody Hoesley, and Erica Roth. So I'm not sure if you know them names or not, but um so they serve on our board just like you serve on this one with the hope of giving back to the communities. And so as a branch of local government, we're um not here to make a profit, we're actually your regional partner and we're here to help. So we appreciate you giving us this opportunity and we appreciate the conversations we've had with Lauren um and having the opportunity to come out and help New Glarus succeed. Um so tonight I'm gonna touch on some basics of TID, some of you may have been around for a while and know TID, you currently have two TIDs in New Glarus. Um, we recently just started assisting um communities with TIN and TIP planning uh mostly because of my background and I've been with regional planning a little over a year now. Uh as planners, we are seeing more and more communities facing the same challenges, population decline, school enrollment decline, workforce shortages, housing shortages, especially housing shortages, there's a need for affordable housing. Um and when I say affordable housing, please keep in mind that I'm not talking income-based housing, affordable housing looks different in every community based upon your jobs available. So some people, when you say that, think income-based housing and and I want to make that clear right off the get-go. Um, so unfortunately, there's um a lot of times it was the administrators or the clerk, the treasurer that would kind of do these plans and take them off the shelves and make sure they were acting. There's limited capacity. Limited capacity of staff, there's more and more to do with less and less people. And so we want to make sure that when you have a plan in place too, that we're out here helping you implement those. We say we are your regional partner, we want to partner with not only New Glarus but the county. And we we work throughout the county on in many different places, we're working in Monticello. We just had a meeting in Monroe, so everyone's who work in Monroe as well. So we do take a holistic approach, we look at not only how can this help New Glarus, but how does it affect the county overall? Because you have to have that, all of those partners to be successful in your economic development. We also bring in all your, all the partners, so we bring in your engineers, we bring in Director of Public Works, the administrators, clerks, you know, whoever you want in the planning process, we want to make sure that they're all at the table so that it's not just a plan that I build this here or try to build that there, we want to make sure that it's a successful plan. So what is a TID or a TIP? Um, a tax increment district or TID is the actual geographic boundary that's created when you pick a section or pieces of a community and you put them into this district. And then TIP is the tax increment financing tool or the mechanism to spur economic development within the TID or within a half-mile boundary of the TID. It is the single most important and effective financing tool that we always have in the state of Wisconsin. It was authorized in nineteen seventy-five and under Wisconsin statutes. And it helped to create public-private partnerships, it was a way for local government to work with investors so that they could actually invest in communities and they can make a profit while growing your community and growing your tax base. It eliminated the inequitable situation between tax and jurisdictions. You see a lot of growth in communities like Madison because economically, there's a lot of people there who are going to make things happen and who are going to pay for that development to happen. If the smaller municipalities like New Glarus, you see, well, I mean, you guys are located pretty close, you have a lot going on, so you're really in a prime location for good economic development and housing. So tax increment district financing and TIDs are pretty complicated if you, I could go into all the detail, but I don't want to be here all night. Um, you probably don't want me here all night. Um, so in essence, what it is, is we create the district, we come up with the planning and improvement projects, and then it spurs the development and growth. Easy peasy, right? So why do we want TIDs for orderly growth and development? We don't want an industrial development right next to a residential development, you don't want um a garbage transfer station sitting right next to a nice new residential development of housing and stuff. And so these help promote orderly growth and development, you're putting things in certain locations throughout your municipality, you're strategically placing that so that you are able to grow and attract people. Um for plan- planning and financing and growth, for growth and development, it helps offset some of those infrastructure costs, the village and utility. So it helps offset some of those costs while you're overlying taxing jurisdictions, they're helping foot the bill for the growth because they will reap the benefits of it. So we currently have the two TIDs in New Glarus, the one is closing soon. They closed in twenty twenty-six, that one added over thirteen million dollars in property value to New Glarus. And then TID Four was created not too many years ago in twenty fifteen, and that one there has already added six point seven million. So you do have two successful TIPS currently in place. With the new development occurring in Valpelle, a TID would provide a great opportunity for investors to come in and get houses or just for development there. So now one.
I'm new.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Roughly one of the boundaries to four.
I didn't, I don't have the map.
Downtown and back town. And then a little bit south of downtown.
So up that way.
Right, yeah, breweries are separate TID, that's number three, and then pretty much the pink area on that map is
Okay. Thank you.
So part of our service also is to assist with those other two TIDs and make sure that if there's opportunities for investment or if there's other things we can do, we can either help amend those plans or we can take a look with Lauren and help with economic development and see how you can reinvest the monies within them, because I think the one that's closing, that one has a surplus, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so that will either have to go back to the overlying taxing jurisdiction to invest in, it's pretty close to the closing date, so we'd have to look at that plan, but we're happy to help provide that service and take a look at that. So now what do you have to do, you have to approve our proposal. So we can get started and come in if you want to create a TIP district, and then what'll happen is that you'll um refer it back to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission will kind of do the work, will do the work with your administrative staff or whoever you designate for us to do the work with, we'll start to look at creating that TID and that plan in place through public hearing process, it takes about six months. You're up, there's public hearings and notices that need to be published thirty days in advance.
Has there been any preliminary discussion on what properties to include in it?
So we looked at the, we were looking at the Valpelle property.
You have an idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, so go ahead, Misty.
You can, no, you can go ahead, because I I mean Troy was in a lot of those discussions and so.
So we we know Valpelle Phase Two would be kind of this area here and then even possibly over here as well. I'd love to get that included, but there are some restrictions with TIDs, you have to include some commercial properties. So we have to get a little strategic in how we do the boundary, might have to include some of Highway sixty-nine in that as well, or maybe even the industrial part. Um, so yeah, we would work with Southwest to kind of figure out what's the best kind of area to include.
And then there's restrictions, of course, you have to be within twelve percent of your total equized value. You can't put more than twelve percent in TIDs. Um, so much of it has to be residential property versus commercial and industrial, because we could do a mixed use TID. Um, there's quite a few, it looks like there's a few lots, quite a few lots in this section here that aren't built on yet.
They are.
They are. Okay, no, the map I looked at today, there was quite a few that were still, they're all built on.
Somebody's maybe built a whole bunch.
When will they be, when will they be assessed?
On the other side of W.
Uh, they'll be assessed next ye- next year, so they would have had it be finished by January first of this year in order to be fully assessed.
So we could, we could grab some of those newer properties and then start, because then you would start building your
Yeah.
your increment base right away, you'd have cash flow right away to help put in infrastructure for the additional properties.
Normally created, but pretty easy. This one's a long pullback, we had to do some adjusting on because it was pretty much a second free corridor here, but then I I think our percentage was not right, so then we had to do some adjustments, Brian was here on that.
Yeah, there is a rule for um planted versus um newly planted versus unplanted residential, too. Um, if it's all planted residential, that helps a lot. So if if we're working on a TID plan and some of it gets planted before the TID plan takes effect, that helps with some of those percentages and, you know, you might only put one commercial property in it to be a mixed-use TID. So there's some ways to look at the law and comply with it, but.
Yeah.
How did you? Lauren, can I ask a question, Lauren?
Yeah.
Okay, I have this, I have the slideshow up on the screen, so I'm not sure what my face is doing at this point, but I do have video here. Um, it.
We can see you, Ben.
Um, that TID Four has brought in sick over six million, and my question was, is I know it had a slow, it was a slow start, I just wondered, where is that six million founded? I mean, where was that improvement? For the TID Four.
So it would have been any improvements to the downtown buildings, I don't know if it was one specific project, it was probably just an accumulation of multiple projects throughout downtown.
I think it was pretty much that when we started.
That's, no, this is, this is actually the added value of it, it was like, oh, thirteen. I think it was about thirteen million when you started and now it's over twenties.
That included planners.
Yeah, they included the back town, and then there's been quite a few businesses downtown that have, with our, especially with our revale and property values going up.
Oh, yeah.
When you make the, when you make the work that's been done downtown with the revale, increase property values.
Okay, I just, I, it's hard for me to believe that because I know it was not moving as quickly as we had anticipated. This was a number of years ago, it was mentioned, but so I just wondered where that growth was coming from, or that.
Yeah, yeah, the hotel would help.
That would be huge.
Help us a lot.
So do you have any other questions for me?
How, how, how do you decide between a mixed use and uh industrial?
Well.
Can you do just the residential or not?
No.
Oh, you can.
No.
But you don't have to do industrial.
No.
No, they are.
Commercial, it's commercial.
Commercial.
Multi-residential.
Single family, right?
Yeah.
Well, mixed includes industrial and resident.
Well, we would want it.
Industrial is different than.
Yes. Yeah, it's um.
Like Jack Link.
Yeah. What's the industrial up there, Orange?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
And if, and if there's open lots, we could put the in, some of that industrial park in the TID to to spur development in the industrial park, so you could add industrial, commercial, and then some of your commercial lots, if they're option, I mean, some businesses are considered industrial, but they're not like a cheese plant or like, you know, I mean, you ultimately have a decision on what goes where.
I'll get to decide whether it's industrial or commercial.
I guess zoning.
It's outzoned.
Yeah, it's hollow zoning.
It's strictly outzoned.
I think it's zoning and then you've got like a comprehensive plan or a future land use plan, which is, which you hope and think the land would be used for it.
Or zoning ordinances.
Yes.
Right.
Specifically designate what fits in each zoning district.
Okay, that's, I don't need any long, that sounds good. Thank you.
Can you include developed um industrial sites that are basically vacant, like to attract somebody to come into that building? Because there's that, I mean, it's currently used as storage, but that old Brennan store. You know, maybe if that's part of a development where something could come in and be used. You include.
I mean.
Well, it's just inactive, yeah.
Yeah, John took a tour the other day.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you certainly could include something.
Brennan's building.
Yeah, but I didn't take a tour.
Oh, I thought you told me you went through that, sorry.
I went to Brennan's. Okay.
But we got a big, big store.
But yeah, it's.
Frozen.
Okay.
Fruit beers and stuff.
Does it need improvements?
I don't.
If they do, they'll do it themselves.
Yeah, okay. I mean, we certainly could include. What you want it, what you want to include is property that needs to have improvements on it, whether it be something added to it, some sort of an improvement added like a new house or a new business or whatever.
Okay.
Or some blighted properties, you could add some blighted properties in
Okay.
that you could improve them, because then you're increasing your tax base.
Ideally, fuck the ground up, let's, you know. No, current, ideally.
Ideally, yeah.
Because that's your biggest.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Gain. Property value.
Some of the other things we're writing into our TID plans in our um is um renewable energy or energy sources like EV charging stations and stuff. So if the municipality is looking at the future and looking at how do we get people here and how do we get them to stay and where would we place them? We would look, we would want to talk with your Director of Public Works about future projects or your city engineer about future projects and what that looks like as far as putting in some of that infrastructure, if that's something the village isn't interested in. Then we're also looking at for affordable housing, um being able to make the lots so the houses would face south, so we could do solar panels and stuff to make it more affordable, more affordable over a longer, longer period of time. So that the utilities and stuff are reduced, so those are some of the ideas too that we just discussed and talk about with staff.
Okay. So there is a proposal in your packet. Um, H sixty-nine, I'm myself, so uh to have Southwest uh do this TID plan would be eight thousand dollars uh so they can write this proposal. Um, so if you want to go forward, we can, we can do that, and actually, we can finance it with kind of a loan from the general fund to the new TID. So one day when that is uh generating increment, we can actually pay the general fund back. Um, so.
I move to approve uh the creation of a new TID plan.
Here, a second, I'd rather uh put this off until our next meeting for a little more uh thought, and I, I, I would like to see a little bit more meat in your proposal as specifically what might might do with these potential properties. Um, what it might include, I know that's up to us, but uh I, I think it's a pretty bare-bones proposal. Certainly, the cost is reasonable. But um I'd like a little more uh discussion and thought into the particulars.
I think it would be useful to see along tracks lines uh consideration of what properties would be like you said, parcels, what would maybe make sense just from a high-level perspective um on things, it doesn't have to be, you know, detailed totally selected, but you know, what's worth considering? You know, and put some thought into the, the actual property that we would include.
Ultimately, we're gonna be discussing this together.
Yeah, but I, I think.
For now, I think me would like a little more.
Yeah, with, with the expertise you have, I think a high-level words I have you, just, this is kind of the general area, we're thinking simple PDF on Google Maps or something.
Sure, I think they left it pretty broad because it is kind of broad at this point, you know, we're talking about what are the best areas we want to, and that'll be part of the whole planning process.
That's part of this.
Correct, yes, yeah. So, and I've had discussions with them and we've started brainstorming, but I have to start paying them to actually start all that work. I have to start paying them to actually start all that work.
Okay. What are your thoughts on the urgency to get this approved? I mean.
Well, you know, I've, I've talked with, with an interested developer of Valtel who said at this time, you can't move forward because the costs are not, the numbers are not working. And so if let him know if there's a possible, you know, other options to partner. And I, I kind of let him know, yo, we're looking at doing a, you know, a tid, um, so I would.
So let me ask you this, Lauren, if, if we were to approve this and move forward with, you know, actually creating the tid, would that spur some more serious interest in this development where potentially we could get a subdivision plan recorded immediately prior to having this approved, then we could.
My hope.
That would, so that, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, if you can actually get a developer in here for another phase.
Right.
That's, that's.
That would be the ideal timeline.
Yes. So from, from that perspective, I understand a little more.
Sure.
And that, that makes a lot more sense if you've actually got some interested parties who could take advantage of this.
Right.
Right away.
Mm-hmm.
And their footing, some of it, they're, they're taking a chance on it. We're partnering with them to, to do this.
And you're also looking at forty acres west of the village or in the village, I should say.
The.
What the school currently.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about if that's possible to get added. I think we have to run the numbers on if that's too much in housing or I guess how we would fit it all in.
All right, is there somebody interested in that one too?
Well, I think it's another prime area for development.
Especially if you're talking solar.
Oh, yeah.
But that, I may not, if that would be included in the whole thing, there might be enough.
Do you have any thoughts?
Mixed. What you're looking at to include that residential piece.
Absolutely, yeah. No, I, I highlighted, when I met with them, I highlighted Valtel, the school property, and also New Chetel. I don't think we can probably fit all three of them there, but you know, we'll work with them and obviously this will come to the board too as we're.
Yeah, so that's part of this creating this plan, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So that's what I moved.
Yeah, yeah, based on that, I think I just comfortable seconding that.
Okay, we have motion in the second.
I think it makes sense to help the village.
I really do.
I also hate to do this to you, but I'll roll call. We're gonna roll call this one.
Larry Susie?
Aye.
Chuck Wilson?
No.
Becky Cruz?
No.
Doc Thompson?
Um, I, I want to see more. So I guess the answer is no at this time? Is that really what we're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Marty?
Yes.
Project Chairman?
No.
Yeah.
Motion fails. So I guess we need a little more information for what it does, so.
Absolutely.
What does the ratio have to be?
Or for a mixed use tid.
Yeah.
So a lot of it depends on if it's pre-platted or not platted yet.
Yeah.
Um, so you can only have thirty-five percent of non-platted.
Okay.
In, in the total tid. So if, if you had an area that was all the way planted and you had one commercial business in it, that would be enough.
Okay.
If it's all planted.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I don't think any of us are against the concept, but I think we would like, you know, more examples of if you can come back or someone Southwest with your proposal and say, for example, we would, if we did this, you would get this potentially.
And, and unfortunately, I mean, we can certainly, we can certainly see, see what we can do, but like Lauren said, a lot of that comes in the plan process because we're getting your input. We're not just creating a map.
Asking for examples of.
Do you want to see examples of other ones we've done?
No, no, just uh.
Specific to yours.
Already looked into this, discussed it with Lauren. So, you know, just for example, if you delineated X amount of properties up here. Um, you know, they're worth this much. Now, what might be the potential improvement?
I know this is part of the plan, but.
Sure.
Um, this is just a little too basic for me.
Sure.
And I'm, I'm on board with the concept.
Yeah, absolutely. And one of, one of the things is we do, we don't build until the plan is fully adopted. And it's TIP eligible expense, so it doesn't cost your taxpayers anything either. And there is a timing. Timing is obvious on it. So um we will see what we can do and we'll be certainly be in touch with Lauren. Thank you for the opportunity.
I have one more question.
Sure.
So dealing with those percentages, let's say we decide to move forward. And that's within a specific area. And we're right at what we need, right at the maximum for that single family, multi, the multi um use. If somebody comes in and says, oh, I see you're committed to this, we're gonna do a plot. Are we at that time able to amend or still amend the boundaries of what we would include in the tid? So if that, if that were to happen?
So a tid plan is about, about twenty years and.
Before we get it all approved, we can amend the boundaries?
Oh, yeah, you can amend the boundaries right up until the village board adoption resolution, which is, like I said, probably in the five month window.
Right.
So it will be approved with the approval process, it would be about five months.
Yes.
And then the six, usually the six month is when the joint review board meets for the final time and just blesses whatever the village board approved. So you would have up until that last village board meeting to uh amend the map in any sort of way. And we certainly could have as many public or just village board working sessions as you need us to have to make sure we're including properties.
Yeah, from my experience, a lot of times of development, a planted project that takes, you know, like six months to get full approvals by the time you go through initial concept review, you know, initial planning permission review, plan preliminary plat, final plat recording, all that stuff. And if we can.
And you can hold off.
Hold off on approving it until the plaque gets recorded, have that included in the boundary and.
Yeah, you could go all the way through the plan process and not adopt it at village board level, so that way it would give you time to make any changes. Because it is not approved, it is, it is not effective until village board approves it that final time. So you could make this process a twelve month process if you want. It's just a minimum. I mean, we did one just recently in four months. But it was a push
Yeah.
to get everybody's schedules to work. And so we did it in four months with the holidays and stuff coming. It's gonna be a little more difficult because everybody's schedules are full.
Yeah. Um, so what happens?
So the problem with if we wait too long, if there's developers ready to break ground or wants to break down in Martin, may, say they wanted, they say, if we can't do it in May, if we can't start in May and get a developer's agreement in place,
Yeah.
then we're gonna wait a whole other year or go somewhere else. You know, so those are some of the things to consider.
And I will say, we have time with this because we're still waiting on a water reservoir going in, it's gonna need a booster station. So there's some, there's some time, there's some infrastructure improvements that are gonna need to be made in that, in this Valtel specific area.
Yeah.
Uh, but certainly I think this is a good time to start thinking about how would we finance something, like some of those infra, infrastructure improvements uh to make the, the numbers work for the development.
And you, you said you don't get paid till this gets adopted?
Yeah, we don't, we don't charge. I think that that's in our um memo that we charge at the end when the plan is adopted.
It happens if the whole thing goes down the tank and it doesn't.
I guess I'm not sure. I mean, like I said, we are a not-for-profit, we're a regional landing partner. Um, a lot of our funds come from the county, from the five counties that we serve, and then we're funded by a lot of grant funds. So um, I guess, I don't know. I think, I feel like that if we're, we're coming in and we're having these conversations, we know, one, the reason we're here is because there's possible development options. Um, there's ways to help fund that. And so typically, I don't foresee them not moving adoption. But if it's, you know, ten or eleven, twelve months down the road, then, you know, that's when we, because we want it, we want to make sure that you're paying it out of your tip too, that you're, that it doesn't cost the city taxpayers and, or the village taxpayers anything.
Yeah, well, that's, I just wanted to emphasize that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. So Lauren, I'm assuming you'll work with her tomorrow and bring it back as soon as those reviews.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, item J, division session elders proposal for water utility break study, page seventy.
All right. Uh, so at the last board meeting, we obviously had uh utility cash flow analysis provided by elders that kind of highlighted uh over the next, you know, five years, some rate increases that will be needed. Um, the major one that was uh, well, the two major ones that were highlighted in the analysis need to happen pretty quickly are the electric utility rate increase in the water. Um, WPI will be handling our electric. Um, but we will need uh uh some financial advisor to handle our water rate case. Um, elders is usually who we uh handle this. Um, this will uh help us not only kind of catch up on our finances for the water utility, but also to allocate for the water reservoir project. Um, so that's why we need to get this done pretty quickly because we're not gonna be able to uh borrow funds for that project unless we start getting our rates up to um a level that's needed for, to, to finance the borrowing. Um, so Ella's provided this uh proposal on page seventy, with the total cost for this breach study.
Ten five.
Yeah, ten double five hundred.
Okay, can you slow down just one minute? So in our um audit, we've, we've got light and water together as one, right? We don't break them out.
Ah, it's broken out.
At least I didn't see it here, maybe, maybe there's some.
They're both in one fund, they're both in fund fifty, but electric is fifty-ten and water is fifty-four. So they're, they're broken out. They're in the same fund, but broken out within that fund.
Uh, uh, I, I understand you understand that. Do these guys understand that?
I hope so.
Because I didn't, I didn't find where, wherever I look, it's always merged together. So I don't know.
That's, that fund is usually merged together. Yes.
So next time we do this, we get the bastards to break it out so we can look at it and see what it's doing. Sorry, I'd like to scrap the bastard's part out of that.
I, I believe there is a section where they did, and I'm, I'm blinking on exactly.
Okay, maybe I just didn't spend enough time.
Find it out to you.
Okay, all right. So, so what, what's your sense of where we are right now on, I mean, we saw all that cash flow stuff that elders did last time.
Right.
Right? And what's your sense of where um water is at this point?
It's in dire need of a rate increase specifically to finance the reservoir project, which.
Oh, up on the hill?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right.
Yeah, if we don't do this rate study, we're not gonna be able to finance the reservoir. We have a million dollars that is going towards that project, but we need uh mechanisms to be able to finance the rest of that.
Yeah, yes. And, and one of our sources just evaporated.
Correct, so we're not, well, we're not.
Back on the private sector for that money. So what are we looking for in terms of total money?
Uh, two point two million.
Okay, more than that. So three point two altogether, one, one comes from Tammy?
Yep. Correct.
Okay. Well, it's not an impossible number, but obviously rate would be pretty swell thing to have. So you say this has to go pretty fast. What does that mean?
Um, so it would be good to approve this uh proposal tonight because then we can get elders to start working on it ASAP and hopefully get rates in place by Q four of twenty twenty-four. That's how long it takes.
Rates in place by?
Q four of twenty twenty-four.
Fourth quarter.
Rates in place for this coming year.
For twenty-four. Yeah.
Is that, are we being realistic about that?
That's a little.
I keep hearing it's a drag all the time and you gotta have, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Right. Uh, we're hopeful it's in Q four, but we're planning for the worst and thinking it might, it could be twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
We're looking into interim financing options as well um to kind of bridge.
When is construction supposed to start on that?
This summer.
This summer?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. You want a motion? Um, um, one more question. Um, uh, maybe I missed it somewhere. How are we paying for it?
So, uh, correct, yep. So this rate uh study will allow us to increase rates to pay for um the debt on the.
I mean, how are we paying uh elders?
Through the utility, oh, through the.
Utility?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Second. We have motion in a second. Any further discussion? There are none of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion Gary. Uh, for the worst public safety, the greatest discussion, special event permit and operators license approval process.
Right, on page seventy-seven, um, I put together a memo that kind of outlined the discussion that the Public Works Public Safety Committee had a couple of months ago regarding streamlining a couple of permit processes. Um, I know Goff has brought up interest in kind of decreasing the amount of staff time and also decreasing the amount of time an applicant has to wait for their um uh application to be approved. Um, so I did some work kind of looking at some of our processes and I think there's two that we could look at streamlining a little bit. Um, you know, these types of processes are dictated not only by like our, our municipal code, but there's some state statute that also uh dictates it. So, you know, there's, we can't just do whatever we want, I guess, is what I'm saying. Um, but the two that I kind of highlighted as possible, um, one to streamline are the special events permit and then the operator license approval. Um, so I'll start with special events permits. Uh, just a quick rundown on how it's currently approved, which I'm sure you all know, but um, you know, the applicant submits an application, um, that includes all the required documentation that, you know, bit larger events have to submit an emergency operations plan. Um, then that application is reviewed by police, fire, EMS, and public works. Once those are approved, once those are reviewed, um, the application moves to the Public Works Public Safety Committee meeting for recommendations to the village board. Um, I added that if an application is in a public park, uh, we like to also add that to the parks and rec committee. Um, and then finally, uh, the village board has the final approval on that application. So after looking and kind of talking with the public works, public safety committee, I have a couple of ideas for streamlining that process. Um, so the first one is if it's a repeat special event, for example, Oktoberfest, we would skip the committee meetings and add the, add it to the consent agenda on the village board. Um, so, you know, ones that we see every single year haven't changed much, um, they could kind of go through the, the fast track of the application process. Any new events would still be reviewed by the committees and uh be added to the village board like normal. Um, the other item I added is we could also remove the requirement for an applicant to attend the meeting if it's a repeat special event. Um, I know, you know, they take time out of their day to come to each of these meetings and if it's a quick approval, they probably don't need to, to be there.
So what, in an ideal world, somebody comes in on a how, how, how long would it take them to get, to get to what? I mean, we meet twice a month.
Right.
So.
It would, yeah, it would be as simple as.
The, the most would be, it'd be thirteen days if they came in the day after tomorrow until our approval process.
Correct.
This, which is, that is hardly a big delay.
Still needs staff to review it, obviously, and that might take a few days. Um, so.
You could put it on the agenda.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Just to be clear, things, uh, uh, events that happen every year like Oktoberfest can be put on the consent agenda. And if there's something that is a little bit different that a village board member has a question on, they can always request it be removed from the consent agenda and discussed.
Correct, yeah.
That might be.
Require that person to be here, so.
If, if. That might be a problem though for time wise, considering, I mean, realistically, we've had a lot, we've had several occasions where people uh the applic, applications come in late.
Right, I wasn't.
Frank, so um under the uh repeat special events, um skipping the public works, parks and rec, um, I would just add to the, I, I, I think that's fine. But I would add to that if there are no substantial changes made.
Right, right.
If they're gonna make changes to that application.
If they're gonna make changes to that application, i.e. uh, street closures, um, whatever. Then I think they're gonna have to go through the process as we know it now.
I know after one of our last events. It, it was either. One of the, it was said that we had closed off a street and it turned out that really didn't work very well. You guys, you guys have a post thing that you go through and look at what worked or didn't work and so that the next time it comes around you, a year later, you remember those things? You, do you do any of that?
So if there's a road closure, I know usually what it is. I have the applicant, the application from here before. Okay, sometimes I'll review that. And I'll look at like, what, what they, what are they trying to change? Or what are they trying to get by us that's not? Um, there was one festival that we had, I think you know what I'm talking about. Where they shut down everything. And honest truthfully, they can't do that.
Right.
Um, one, because it's a common road. And, um, for traffic wise, we shut down everything on them. And we had one road pour up. There was no way to get through.
Yeah, yeah.
And plus the emergency stuff and all. Exactly. So, honest truthfully, that's where we review it. I'll go, okay, we need to change this.
But I think the, I think the public needs, needs more potential input this, and I'm gonna personalize this. Um, to myself, living on Fourth Avenue, um, two or three times, uh, there's been an event on Fourth Avenue where they wanna, where they just applied and said we're gonna close, close Fourth Avenue from, from Second Street to to Fifth Street. Blocking off a, uh, ex, a whole neighborhood's access to their, to their properties. Um, with no, you know, no public input. Well, it turns out they didn't really need to do that. It was just convenient to make those boundaries. And, uh, and of course I opposed it, uh, living there. But this can happen anyplace. So, so if we just, you know, if we bring these things to the consent agenda without public being aware of this, um, then there's no public input. And that's why I say, if there are no changes from the prior application, i.e. street closures or, or whatever else it might be. Then it's fine, I think, to skip the.
You're probably gonna wanna say if there weren't, aren't any changes and the request didn't cause any significant issues. Posted up.
Well, that'd be fine too.
You know what I'm saying?
But I mean, if.
We approve something and then it turns out there was a huge issue with it, and they come back next year and apply for the same thing, there's no changes.
But isn't that where we're counting on our senior management to twig that and say, A, can, or B, it's gonna be another meeting. If you can't do it, the next meeting, you gotta do it the following one, so we have a chance.
But we still need, the public still has, should have a chance to input into this. Okay, we can't re. We rely on our senior management, sorry, Joe, department heads, they don't think of these things. And, and it has slipped by.
I'm sure it's not a perfect system. I'm just trying to figure out how the bulk of them get done.
I don't, I don't.
Best way.
Actually, I don't, I don't really even see the issue here. I think if people can't get their applications in on time and, and on the dotted line. Then.
Then, then they wait a meeting.
Then let's grow, let's grow up and, and do it right. But, and I understand your point of trying to expedite this. But there needs.
Come to multiple meetings.
I don't see Becca jumping up and down shouting, but, um, there needs to, there needs to be some safeguard. Um, because of the cost. Because if it comes to the consent agenda with a problem, like somebody overlooked the change. Then it's really gonna delay the approval.
Would you rather just be an agenda item rather than go to the consent agenda?
No, I, I, I don't mind that. All I'm saying is, the, the, the wording should be specific. I, I think this is fine. I think, I, I think Lauren has, you know, gotten a great idea for streamlining. All I'm saying is, um, just.
Time to the language.
Qual, qualify this, yeah. Define it and say, especially, repeat special events. Um, can skip public works, public safety, parks and rec, um, if there are no changes. Could affect the park.
Or you could simply say, repeat events. Not having any issues. With past applications.
But yeah, same thing, I guess, whatever, however you. And that would expedite, you know, I mean, I know the meetings are. Sometimes we would need a meeting except for these things. They're a bother.
Alright, yeah, I can incorporate that. Um, uh, I'll move on to operator licenses then.
We have to, uh, excuse me, but we have to prove this.
This is more of just a discussion. I, I'll take it back and.
This is a.
Fine tune in and.
I think some of this is ordinance, right?
Some of this is what, Chuck? Oh.
Not necessarily. Um, the ordinance on some of these are pretty vague on how the process works. So I think what I would do is probably come back with the specific language on how we want the approval process to work moving forward. And then I've incorporated it into the actual application documents, so everyone's on the same page. So. Uh, so for operator license, um, the current process works that the application, or the applicant submits, it's an application that requires a background. Um, they have to submit a background information that's reviewed by the police department who recommends approval or denial. Um, that application is then added to the Public Works Public Safety Committee that they recommend to the village board. Um, that committee frequently follows the recommendation of the police department. And so we've had discussion on whether it needs to go to the committee. Um, so ideas for streamlining this process would be if the application is recommended for approval by the police department, it would skip the committee and get added to village board consent agenda. If an application is recommended for denial, then it would, would be reviewed by both the committee and the village board as an item.
So you just wanna update this? Streamline it and bring it back.
Yep, yep, yeah.
Send the issues with the second one. With the operator license, I don't see any kind of, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
So would we make a motion to approve that section and just bring the other one back so it's done?
I don't, you have to bring the other one. If, if you're talking about the, my proposed. You know what, you know what, we're. You, you get it?
Yeah, I do.
Unless somebody ejects.
You need a motion and then just approve it with the. Motion and you don't have to.
Sure.
Probably the operator licensing, that may come under ordinances, right?
It does, yeah. And it comes under our ordinance and state statute. So I looked into that and made sure. Uh, it does need to be approved by the village board, so that's why I kept it in the village boards consent for as an item if it's in denial. Yeah, I mean, if you wanna just make a motion to allow me to move forward with these changes that were discussed.
Okay, I, I would like to make a motion to approve the changes to the operator license and the special event permit. Um, incorporating comments made by itself and check on the changes to the special events.
Second.
Any none in the favor, say aye. Uh, is there anything for parks and rec? Oh, under the presence, or excuse me.
Holidays are coming up. Uh, I reviewed the upcoming board meeting. Um, it seems we don't really have many conflicts other than January second, likely staff will be out of the office and not able to put together a agenda for that meeting. So I think it's okay to cancel it. I will add that, um, when we do cancel board meetings, Kelsey normally will just handle the check run and have myself and Roger sign off on it. So if you're comfortable with that, we would do that for the holiday time period when we're not having a board meeting. And they will get brought to the next board meeting, but they'll just had already have been paid.
Yeah.
So be aware of that.
Yeah.
Get one back. Good luck.
So we'll need a motion to cancel that meeting.
Second.
Please, I have motion to second. Any discussion? During none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Okay, and a B, consideration discussing village employee holiday party.
Hey, um, Kelsey and I, uh, were talking about organizing a little holiday gathering for employees and their significant others. Um, so they'd obviously thank employees for all their work throughout the year and kind of just celebrate. Um, so we're getting, we're asking for approval of a budget up to a thousand dollars to, um, purchase a nice dinner for staff and their significant others. Um, so the thousand dollars will be broken down between departments and, and funds. So some of that, depending on where the employees are from, so. We'd look at general fund employees, you pay out the general fund, utility employees, you pay out utility, et cetera, et cetera. Unless the board would like to have it all.
Run it through ourselves.
That would be fine, too.
I'm going to approve up to a thousand dollars for the village employee holiday party.
Second.
Hey, motion second, any further discussion? He, none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carried. Anything else from the board? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.